Okay.
Can we have a little call? Okay, Brian Himmelstein, here.
I'll continue to go through it. Rob, Rob Veig.
I'm here.
Shannon McKenna.
Here.
Tori Verz.
I'm here.
Julie Himmelstein. Julie, I believe is here, just needs to unmute her microphone to say hello.
I'm here.
There we go. John Mullins. John Mullins, I don't believe is here yet. Sean Gallagher, I'm here as solicitor and present from the public, I believe, is Ron Olson.
Yeah, we need Crystal Schultz.
Sorry, Chris, yep, my bad. Crystal Schultz.
I'm here. Last but not least.
And Ron Olson.
Ron, can you just say hello for the record, please?
Hello, it's Ron Olson.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we have several sets of minutes to read through. Just, yeah, so, we're gonna read the minutes in here, starting, starting with March 9th.
March 9th, 2020, Minister Valencia Borough Council, attendance President Brian Himmelstein, Vice President Shannon McKenna, Rob Veigh, Mayor Crystal Schultz. Minister Brad Rob made motion to accept minutes, Crystal seconded, motion carried. Financials, Shannon made motion to accept treasury report, Rob seconded, motion carried. Paying bills, Shannon made motion to pay bills, Rob seconded, motion, motion carried. Brian made motion to pre-approve check to be written from the escrow account when deposits are made. Crystal seconded, motion carried. Visitors, Tori Verz, Judy Getz. Full business, zoning, no evacuation plan has been received. Chris Rarick advised plan is incomplete and no approval. Chris should be notified as soon as the evacuation plan is received. There are three culverts not listed on the drawing, Scott Shoup to review. There is a, there is a safety issue with the walking trail and retaining laws. Tori will request to have materials moved back a few feet. Also, additional funds for the escrow account should be requested. DCED, financial planning, one half growing greener denied and one app no update. There is a new grant available for 20% match up to 300,000 maximum. Web Valley, drainage to be completed by mid-April, MS4 table, 2019 audit in process. Information to be given to the auditor. New business, Breakneck Creek flooding, there are nine obstructions in the creek. St. Barnabas said, no, not all flooding, not all flooding is coming from St. Barnabas. Getting park ready for spring, debris needs to be removed, signs on the fence need moved, new mulch is needed to, is needed and dead trees need cut. Spring law tree to be April 4th at 10:00 a.m. Primary elections, April 28. Crystal made motion to adjourn, Brian seconded, motion carried.
All right, can I have any comments on the, on the minutes?
Nope.
All right, can I make?
I'll make a motion to accept the minute, meeting, the meeting minutes as read.
And I've seconded.
What's that, Rob?
Yes. We have minutes from, from March 30th. That was our public emergency meeting.
March 30th, 2020, minutes from Valencia Borough Emergency Public Meeting. Attendance, President Brian Himmelstein, Vice President Shannon McKenna, Rob Veigh, Mayor Crystal Schultz. No visitors, new business, Rob made motion to rat, ratify disaster declaration and resolution from Mayor Crystal Schultz. Shannon seconded, motion carried. Shannon made motion to approve resolution March 30th, 2020B, to hold remote public meeting. Rob seconded, motion carried. Standing commission meeting for April 4th, 2020, to do the schedule for April 16th, 2020. April 13th, 2020, Borough Council meeting to be held to Sean Gallagher's platform. Details to access need to be advertised on website and about her eagle and on social media. Crystal made motion to adjourn, Rob seconded, motion carried.
My only comment was that, Mr. Shannon, that I was, I dialed in for this meeting. So I don't know if that needs to be reflected in the minutes.
Um, yeah, we can reflect that in the minutes, because Shannon was present by, sorry. Can I have a motion to accept those minutes?
I make a motion to accept the minutes modified.
I seconded.
Did someone second?
Yes, I did.
Rob seconded. Then we have minutes from our April 6 telephone meeting to renew the declaration.
Purpose for meeting to extend emergency declaration to April 13th, 2020. We'll call President Ryan Himmelstein.
Present, just say present.
Vice President Shannon McKenna, present, present. Vote yes. Council Chair, Rob Veigh, present, 7:36, vote yes. Mayor Crystal Schultz, present by text. Council unanimously passed extending emergency declaration to April 13th, 2020. Meeting adjourned at 7:40.
Any questions on that, minutes? Can I have a motion to accept?
I make a motion to accept the minute, Mr. Shannon.
This is Crystal, I make a mo, or I second that motion.
Thank you. I don't know if all of you guys have printed out the financials and all that, but we'll go through these briefly. Currently, right now, on the general checking, we have $108,655. In CD, we have $55,000, for a total of cash and CDs of $163,655.44. March's bills were $3,446.63. Or no, so March's income, March's income, $3,446.63. March's expenses were $6,166.16. We have, in liquid fuels, we have $35,269.8. I guess that, that reflects a 2020 payment? Okay. So we have received our 2020 liquid fuels disbursement. In the escrow account, we had two bills written out, $264.44.
Now that's, that was the balance from last month, we only wrote one out for $586.50. We deposited 2500.
And we deposited the final PRD check for $2,500. So currently, we have $2,177.90 in escrow. Currently, in April, we're showing expenses of $2,531.76. I haven't had a chance to go through any mail to see if there's anything else.
Yeah, there's no, no more bills.
So the total bills we have to pay, $2,531.76. Can I have a motion to accept the financials, as read?
This is Shannon, I make a motion to accept the financials.
This is Rob, I second the motion. Yeah, I have a motion to pay bills.
This is Shannon, I make a motion to pay bills.
This is Crystal, I'll second that motion.
Okay, thank you. I want to recognize Ron Olson at this time, we'll try to jump, oh no, I'm sorry. Yeah. Want to recognize Ron Olson, our engineer. We've had discussions about Breakneck Creek and we've had a few meetings on site. And I just, I want him to talk to everybody about the flooding in the borough.
Okay, this is Ron Olson, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. We, we have some instances of flooding in the borough, in particular, in the area near the bottom of the hill of 3-Degre Road. Part of that flooding is coming from waters of St. Barnabas and other, majority of the water arriving at that location, though, is from other areas of the borough and adjoining areas. In particular, Brian and I had visited the site of the Ball Field. And of course, the Ball Field is a, on land that is owned by St. Barnabas, but the improvements that are there were constructed through the efforts of the borough. That, we have gotten some unusual storms here in, in the last months. And, and there is damage, sediment and erosion in the Ball Field area. We had, while we were on the site, walked up to the St. Barnabas area and noted that the detention basins of St. Barnabas were not functioning as designed. In, in at least one instance, the, the normal primary spillway connection was disconnected from the riser pipe. So water that would be coming in from the impervious areas of St. Barnabas would be going into the basin, but it would be coming out pretty much the same rate as that it went in. So it's my understanding that the borough did send a letter to St. Barnabas. We had some input in what might be in the letter. And I believe it was a very nice cooperative letter, asking St. Barnabas if they would inspect their stormwater facilities and asking them if they would report back to the borough. It's my understanding that there was no direct report from St. Barnabas to the borough. However, I, I discovered that Hampton Tech was working with St. Barnabas on their latest planned residential development. And I talked to Scott Foreman, who works with both Hampton Tech and with Mesa. And of course, the owner of Hampton Tech is Mark Schmidt, and I'm Ron Olson, I have Olson Craft Associates, but the two, the two entities own Mesa. And that makes it somewhat difficult and, you know, we don't want to get into any instances that have apparent conflict of interest. So for instance, it's my understanding, when St. Barnabas came in with its last plan of planned residential development, Valencia Borough then hired a, retained the services of Scott Shoup to review the plans rather than Mesa. Okay, now that being said, though, the previous approved plans would not, in my opinion, be a conflict of interest for me to comment on, and I'm going to do that, but I won't comment on anything being presented right now by Hampton Tech. But I would think that the, the borough, possibly through the, working through the borough solicitor, might want to send another letter to St. Barnabas and ask them for a status report, because it has been, it's been probably two and a half months, or almost three months now, since this, this problem had been brought up to St. Barnabas.
Ooh, December 30th, I sent that letter.
Uh, December, okay, very good. So it's been quite a while. I expected a little more of a response from St. Barnabas, and I, I think maybe we need to work on that a little more. But since that time, I also went out again with Brian, and we walked the, we walked downstream of, along Breakneck Creek. If you go below the, the Ball Field, that is still land of St. Barnabas until you get down there, oh, maybe, what do you think, Brian, a thousand feet? And then it, then it converts to other lands of others, including, there is a driveway going across the crooked, Breakneck Creek that used to serve the Swobodnick paving site, but now we believe that's Roenig. And when we walked that, we noticed that that, that was, that crossing was in really bad shape, and then Brian did email me and said that actually that crossing has collapsed now, and it's probably obstructing the stream. So, let's see, while I'm, it's, I may as well keep going here. So it would be my recommendation, in that instance, that the borough get in touch with the owner of that property, and I'm not sure who that is. I know it's, there are the, the school buses and things like that in that area.
Yeah, it's owned by, it's Roenig.
Okay, but as a courtesy, I think I would notify them that this problem has existed, exists now down there, and give them the first opportunity to clean that concrete pipes and things out of there. They should be applying for a permit with the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection, even to remove things from the stream. But if they would not do this shortly, then the next step would be for the borough to contact directly the Pennsylvania DEP and notify the Division of Water Obstructions up in Meadville, and they would send someone down, and then, actually, obstruction of the stream is under the authority and enforcement of the Pennsylvania DEP. So that's that, that's one of my recommendations. The, the other thing that we learned while we were on site the last time was that there are some trees that have fallen over in Breakneck Creek, and they are obstructing the, the normal flow of the water. And normally, that wouldn't be a problem, because the water would just overflow on the floodplain and, but in this instance, above the 3-Degre Road Bridge in particular, there are some, I guess they're non-residential structures that evidently, when we get a big storm, the water backs up and actually floods out those buildings. So, so that's a, that's a serious thing. So I would, normally, I'd recommend that St. Barnabas be put on notice about that, and it would be, I guess we would need some legal advice as to whether or not St. Barnabas is totally responsible, or if the borough should get involved and possibly, on an emergency basis, remove some of that, the trees that are obstructing. I don't know if, Mike, you're probably tired of listening to me, maybe Sean Gallagher would want to jump in and talk about that.
I'd be happy to. First of all, thank you, Ron, for that. In regard to how much the borough wants to get involved, it really depends on how the borough sees itself in this situation, whether or not it qualifies to the level of emergency. If it's going to cause immediate harm to the people of the borough, then the borough has the, the right to step in and declare it an emergency, to deal with the emergency, and then deal with who pays for it later, whether it be seeking reimbursement from St. Barnabas or other parties. But in, in the interest of not expending a whole bunch of borough funds right at the outset, it may be worth it to see if St. Barnabas would go about working to resolve it first. I believe Ron recommended a letter coming from the solicitor, if council would like us to do that, we'd be happy to do that. But it, it really just depends, you know, how close this is to being in an emergency situation versus something that can be dealt with over the next number of months.
Okay. Well, I mean, I, I would prefer to take the less invasive route, but I have been getting complaints and calls from several of the properties that are right behind St. Barnabas' office building, that would be the auto shop, and then several of the residents on the Richland side of the stream have experienced significant flooding also. And I spoke with one resident over there who was putting a brush pile rather close to the stream and, and putting dirt on the bank, thinking that he was making things better. And I asked them to pull those things out so that they wouldn't end up down below the bridge and clogging up the stream, and I, I think they ended up doing that. So with that, Sean, I'll be more than happy to send you the December 13th letter. And also, we'll find out the actual tax parcel and owner down at the bus garage, and we can reach out to them.
Yeah, I think that's definitely the best way to do it. You've made the initial contact with them now. This follow-up letter from the solicitor is, is going to get things, hopefully, shaking down there. But as in all things involving the DEP, the DEP moves at the DEP's pace. So it may be super fast, it may be super slow, we'll find out as we get closer to coming to a resolution over this.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for Ron Olson?
I have one other issue to bring up. If there's no questions on that, what I just talked about.
So I'll assume there's no questions?
No questions.
Okay, so the other thing I wanted to mention is that Valencia Borough is, is in an agreement with Adams Township on their, what's called MS4 program. That's Municipal Separate Storm Source Systems. And if, if, over the past years, the two municipalities have been working together. And I had mentioned to Brian that there is a, a grant that is available specifically for watershed restoration and protection, and it fits the, the MS4 project that so far we've been, we've been working on. And that is to do steam bank restorations along Breakneck Creek, up near Mioma Road. So at first, I thought that Valencia Borough, you might want us to apply for a grant for Valencia Borough, but I have rethought that, and I think what we'll do, I, I believe Adams Township is going to be applying for this grant. I've recommended that they apply for a $300,000 grant, that's the maximum that can be awarded. And then we would work with Valencia to Borough to get letters of support, and even more than that, explain in the grant application that if, if $300,000 is awarded to the project, that somewhere between 5% and 10% of that will be used to pay Valencia Borough's share of the future work. And I think we'll do better, I think it would be less confusing than to have two applications coming in separately, and especially if Adams Township would not get the grant, but Valencia Borough would be, let's say, applying for, let's say, at the most, let's say, $50,000, well, it really wouldn't be, it wouldn't be convenient for Valencia to get $50,000 when we need so much more. So I, I just think that trying to make this somewhat of a joint project, and I guess, Sean, you might recall here, in the, in the agreement between Valencia Borough and Adams Township, there was an agreement written up, and it is my recollection that we had talked about if any grants were received, that each party would be sharing that grant in, in terms of their share of the project. I think Valencia is, I think your share of the project is 5%.
Yeah.
So if, if eventually we have, let's say, a million dollar project, Valencia Borough would be eventually, this is multi-year project, by the way, too, you would be responsible, let's say, for $50,000. And I know you don't have, you don't have a lot of funds in Valencia especially, so any, any grants that we can get will really help Adams Township, but it would also help Valencia Borough. So that, that's my plan. I would be trying to apply directly to Adams Township and, and I would be trying to apply directly through Adams Township and, and then if we get that grant, Valencia will be sharing in the proceeds. But we will be coming to Valencia with some requests for letters of support and et cetera. We all, we're also planning on going to other municipalities downstream of the project, which might include, for instance, Morris Borough and even Zillan Opal, Harmony Borough. They are downstream of us, so we're not doing the project directly to benefit them. But if we do, if we do get the project done, it will help them and it'll satisfy the DEP requirements for removing sediment from the stream imposed on both Valencia Borough and Adams Township. Do you understand that?
Yeah, that's, that's good, Ron. I was very concerned about us meeting our financial obligation of that agreement, whether it was 20 some, 25,000 or 50,000, but you know. What I understand is out of, if, if Adams Township would get the full 300,000, they would, that we would be just taking our, they would be taking our 5% share.
Yes, you'd be getting credit for 5% of the 300,000, that'd be $15,000 in this debt instance. Now, the one, one other good thing about this MS4 program is that the DEP approved the, the application and, but in so doing, the time limit for doing the project extended now to 2023, used to be 2022. So we, we ended up gaining another year to keep moving. And if we don't get the project done by 2023, the obligation still is there, but the DEP might be putting new obligations on and would have to contend with that in the future. It's pretty much it goes by a five-year cycle, five-year span, and then you go another five-year span. But with all the problems we're having here in Pennsylvania right now, I, I'm hoping that there'll be good cooperation between the state and, and the municipalities. So that's about all I have to report.
Well, Ron, thank you for bringing us all up to speed and giving us some more direction. Thank you for your time tonight.
Okay, thanks. And I'll, I'll say goodnight to you then. Carry on and stay safe.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
We'll move on to old business. The first thing we need to do is we need to renew the emergency declaration for the following seven days, which would take us to 2020. Sean, do I need to read that declaration in again or can we just vote on it?
No, since you've already approved or ratified it once before, you can just ratify it again.
Okay. Can I have a motion to renew the emergency declaration resolution?
I make a motion to renew the emergency declaration resolution, Mrs. Shannon.
I second the motion.
That was Rob. Even though this COVID-19 has kind of moved into the PRD with St. Barnabas, there are still things that are going on. And I'll ask the zoning board whether Julie or Tori wants to give us a update.
I believe Julie was going to give the update, but I see her microphone's off.
I'm here. At, at this point, there are still some issues that we're looking at. Now, Chris did mention in an email on April 7th that the application can be considered as complete because that's, we received the, I mean, I'm looking at dates here now on my notes. We received the evacuation plan on March 23rd, which was one of the items that was needed for the application to be considered complete. At this time, I do not have an update on the DEP permits and sewage planning. So we don't know if that has been taken care of. We also have consideration, I mean, we heard Ron about the flooding. We finally have plans that include the three culverts that cross Three Degree Road onto the property. We only received that plan this morning, however, so I don't know if there needs to be more review from SHU engineering regarding the extra volume of water. And otherwise, you know, we're, we're not sure about our timeline as far as when we would need to have a recommendation regarding approval or not. Anything that I missed, Tori?
The only other thing that I would like to add is that regarding the culverts, as Julie just said, we do want SHU to review it because of all the stormwater runoff, if that's any additional stormwater runoff or if it changes any of the, the factors in stormwater runoff. I do have a concern with one of the, the culverts, it's the one in the middle. Currently, right now, it flows out onto the field and that culvert, the pipe is about halfway blocked up with sand and gravel. So if these culverts are connected via pipes to a central pipe, my concern is how does that culvert get cleaned out? If it's filled up with sand and gravel right now, if it's a connected pipe, how would they go about cleaning it up? Because it will cause some backup to, to the drain area, which is actually on the other side of the street.
Tori, when I view those plans this afternoon, they are showing that they're planning on replacing the pipe across the roadway. So that's going to get into some other issues as far as whether or not the catch spaces are renewed and other things like that. So the two places that they were going to replace the pipe is the one that's up in front of Irk's house and also the pipe that's in front of your house. And they made, they didn't make any mention of replacing the pipe at Hay Street. So I'm not sure what, what the evaluation is on that.
But we don't know anything. And once again, I did not, haven't had a chance to review the plans thoroughly. We don't know the diameter of the new pipe or anything like that, correct?
No, it was going to, well, they said they were replacing 18-inch pipe. I don't know if, if they're replacing with current size or, or not, but this, this also goes into the fact of the HOPE permit. I'm sure that Penn does kind of want to evaluate that also.
This is Sean. Just from a timing perspective, your ordinance states that the Borough Council needs to render a decision on the final application within 45 days following the meeting of the Planning Commission after it's determined to be administratively complete. So that meeting of the Planning Commission will be on this Thursday, the 16th, will start your 45-day timer. Planning Commission and Borough Council will meet one more time, fingers crossed, before that. So if an extension is needed, we can get that or you can get that from St. Barnabas prior to the next Planning Commission meeting. But if, if everything is set to be moved and completed within that 45 days, then you won't need an extension. Just as a note, DEP permits cannot be used as a reason to hold up there since they're third-party permits. But Borough Council can make any approval contingent upon them receiving said permits from the DEP. So realistically, developers are pretty good about granting extensions if there's still outstanding questions. But just know that you're looking at either 45 days from the next, taking action within 45 days of the next Planning Commission meeting or get an extension from the developer.
Thank you for that. I think our biggest concern is that we're not sure if this changes the stormwater dimensions or factors at all. And we would probably want Scott Shute, the engineer, to just give a review. And we don't think that he'll be able to do that within the next couple of days.
Sure, no, but like by my count, the next regular Planning Commission meeting would have been on May 7th, if I have my time correctly here, right? That would have been the first Thursday of the month.
Yes, that's correct.
So that's still within your 45 days. And so Scott can have a report to you by the 7th, then you can make a recommendation to Borough Council for their meeting on the 11th.
I think we would probably prefer that route. We certainly want to do our due diligence to make sure everyone has had the chance to review, who needs to review.
Sure, no, I wholeheartedly agree. And we'll just make that note, make sure that you let St. Barnabas know that you'll be looking at them at your next Planning Commission meeting, not this one upcoming.
Thank you.
All right. Second thing on old business, DECD Financial Planning, ESTMP. We're just, we're going to table that. There's just too many other things on the, on the table right now to be working at. Third thing is Web Alley Drainage. That project is half completed. And Sean, maybe you can answer to this, but is the Borough allowed to work on public works during the emergency declaration?
The short answer to that question is if you feel it is safe for your employees to do so. Local governments are not subject to the shutdown order as it stands under Governor Wolf's order as, as issued currently. Most municipalities have taken the stance that they have a heavily reduced public works presence during this time, making sure that things are maintained and taken care of in case of emergencies, but otherwise not doing general work. It's, it's really up to the Borough to decide how far they want to have their workers working during this time. The important thing that we recommend during this time is that if you're going to have workers out there, that they're maintaining the implements of social distancing. And if unable to do so, then following the Governor and the Secretary of Health recommendation to wear masks. Just be aware, there is going to be litigation coming down the pipe, not towards Valencia specifically, but in general regarding whether or not workers' compensation claims are covered, if you would contract COVID during your time at work. The answer looks like it's going to be yes temporarily, and it's going to be litigated here in short order. But just know that that is something that is coming down the line. We're, we're recommending that you take the conservative approach to keep your employees as safe as possible. But again, if the Borough deems it appropriate and necessary to be able to do so, just make sure that you're maintaining good health policies.
Well, being that they're, they're a subcontract and if they have a waiver to operate during the time of the disaster, then that would be okay for whether or not we can get materials as to whether or not we could finish that project.
Yeah, and if you want to leave that up to the subcontractor, that's, that's more than fine. But in regards to Valencia Borough specifically, there is no order in place prohibiting them from carrying out public works projects.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure there's no liability against the Borough for that. So Ron, Ron spoke about the MS4 grants and the applications, and we'll take those into consideration. I'll have some more conversations with him on that. 2019 audit, I think all the information's been submitted.
Well, no, because when I talked to Justin, he wants to wait until this, you know, the virus is gone. He said, which is, would probably be middle to end of May to get stuff to him.
Oh, okay. So, okay, so there's a hold on the audit due to the COVID-19 virus. And I guess we're waiting to hear from our auditor as to when that will resume. We were supposed to have a walkthrough of the Borough for spring maintenance. Due to the social distancing and all that, I, I postponed that. In the meantime, I've been walking around in the Borough, making notes of things that may need to be addressed as our general maintenance of drainage, culverts and such. So I will, I can bring that up with Akins at a, at another time. I don't see doing any further projects except to finish the Web Alley Drainage. That's the big, huge chunk of our budget. And hopefully we can get through with that and not have significant shortfalls. And the park maintenance stuff is on hold. I, I did rebuild the one basketball hoop and put it back up that was knocked over by Shields Paving. But, you know, currently we're not supposed to be using our park facilities anyway. Does anybody have anything on new business or any other concerns or questions at this
No, this is Shannon, no.
This is Rob, no.
This is Crystal, no.
All right. So at this time, there is no new business. I don't see that there is any correspondence to go through. No, I don't see anything that we need to address in correspondence. Sean, are you aware of the, the bill in the House that they're going to vote on on Wednesday about the, about the meeting of quorums and such stuff?
Beyond the fact that we know that it's scheduled for a vote right now, no. It's basically what the House is, as we understand it right now, what they're looking to vote on is essentially affirming what we're doing here by allowing for quorum via telepresence, which is something that we believe that the law is already provided for under the case law that we've researched and provided to you. But getting formal guidance from the House will help this procedure along. The main thing that we're curious to see is if the House does push this through, does that mean that the guidelines are going to be extended into May? And that's something that we don't know at this point in time. Given the fact the Governor has closed the schools through the end of May, pure speculation on our part, on my part, is that we were probably looking for social distancing measures extended through May. But again, that's pure speculation on my part and we'll wait to hear more from the Governor and the Secretary of Health over the next couple of weeks.
And if it's any consolation, I can tell you that the federal government right now, which is whom I work for, is basically telling us to plan four weeks out from whatever the date is as far as continuing the social distancing regulations with our veterans that we treat. So every day, you know, when we're seeing people, even though supposedly by the end of the month, this is supposed to be released or relaxed a little, they're telling us, no, we are, we are, we are to plan out four weeks from the current date. So as of right now, the federal government is planning to go into May.
Which again, given all the modeling, is kind of what we're expecting. So thank you, Crystal, that helps a lot. Just one thing from my perspective in regards to the meeting that we just had. I know that there's no public here because I get to see the master list. list. But I'm going to ask if there's any public present at this point in time and would like to make comment, please unmute your microphone and do so at this point in time. I'll make that call one more time. If there's any public in this meeting who would like to make comment at this point in time, please unmute your microphone and state your name. And hearing none, there's no public comment for this meeting.
Does that bill reduce any of the restrictions of municipalities having to renew every seven days to the declaration?
That is not something I know the answer to. I can answer that for you tomorrow when I take a look at the text of the bill.
Okay. So as it stands right now, we will have another teleconference on 4/20 to renew the declaration unless anything comes out of the, the bill that the House is voting on loosening those restrictions. Following that, our next meeting is May 11th, 2020. So we'll have to wait and see as to whether or not that'll be a remote meeting or a public meeting in-house.
Hey, Brian, I have a question about everything that needs to be posted. 48 hours, correct? And then what needs to be posted specifically?
Just a minute from the written minutes from the meeting. So we'll ask these, in the text to send to you.
Okay. And then I will, so update the emergency declaration again, that message that we have on the site. And then the meeting minutes from, that we just read off need to be posted.
Yes.
Okay, got it.
All right. Any other?
I need the updates for, sorry, Brian. I just need the updates for the modification to the one meeting minute that we held that I, where I participated over the phone.
Yes.
That's it, thank you.
I thought I, I thought I emailed those to you, Shannon.
So I do. And do you want me to make the modification to the meeting minutes reflecting that I had participated over the phone?
Yes.
Okay. I will make that modification, and then I will post the three different meeting minutes that we approved in this session here.
Okay. Any other questions concerned? Crystal, I want to thank you for your time spent in bringing the Easter Bunny to town. It was very well received. There was quite a few families out waiting for him, and I think that was a really good thing to do.
Yeah. Thank you. I had a, I had a really good time riding around with the, the fire chief and getting to see the joy that it brought to young and old alike throughout our community and others.
All right, thank you. I think at this time, there's no other things, anything missing from the board.
Then I make a, I was gonna say, I will make a motion to adjourn our meeting.
This is Shannon, I make a second adjourn.
Thank you. Thank you, Sean, for bringing this remote technology to the borough so that we can continue business.
Of course, happy to do so. Stay safe, everyone. And I'm going to end the recording of this meeting now that we're adjourned.
All right, thanks, Sean.